We're good. Welcome everyone to the city and it's the first planning board meeting for 2023. It is January 3rd, 2023, Kingston Plan Bore. This is morning of the night and we do a work. This is the board, we have a number of zoning articles and citizen petitions to have public hearings on this. This is a public hearing now. And you'll probably notice that the table is a little bit sparse tonight. I'm just naming names and folks, we do have a problem with that, so we can at least get started and it would be possible that that won't work. So I'll introduce folks to you all. Am I right, my love? I'm sorry. Board member Peter Coffin, there he is. Glenn Mabel in here, our current vice chair, and I'm sitting here tonight for our chairperson Glenn Merrill. So I'm tonight to my right, Robin Carter, our zoning administrator. Chris Bajdar is our select representative. He is planning board member and walking into our town planner Glenn Gregory. We got one board member who might join us assuming he was in front of the horrible traffic coming through. And as Robin Gay will hope that she can join us in some time. So as I said, we have a public hearings tonight for the zoning, the postal amendments dated November 2nd. And then there are three citizen petitions that have been met. And we will do our duty tonight to hold a hearing on those. So let's get started with the one in our process here. It was as though Robin was laid out for us. We have the, I believe, the two zoning amendments from the board. One of which has more parts to be covered. And that is the enforcement section of the zoning ordinance, which should be revamped. And Glenn, you're going to start with this. I'd like you perhaps to give us and the double, just sort of frame for us and explain why we're using this for.
Sure, so over the last couple of years, when our town council had been asked to assist the town during the enforcement issues, to resolve zoning conflicts, he canceled us that our addendum that outlined our procedures didn't include enough information regarding the proper way in which they thought to pursue zoning violations. And so I took a first shot at making those amendments to the present ordinance. And then we submitted it to the town council and she had several things that she would like me to add to that to ensure that when they did the process that they felt was necessary, they would have the support of our team. There's also a number of areas in the ordinance that will now reference this section. So that when people read certain parts of the ordinance still and they want to know about penalties or how it gets enforced, they're directed now to this section that was going to keep them in the world. And I did include in that in a previous draft, two areas that, one of which I was fairly certain we shouldn't do. And so I had said, you know, we might not want to do this other than what I thought we should. She, town council advised me that those really were select amendments ordinances shouldn't be reflected in the zoning provisions. So I drew those from this draft. And so this draft includes only those items that council feels comfortable with.
Okay, so is it my understanding, if I understand correctly, that we have two issues here? One is to present the new article A1000.
Okay, that's correct.
And then we need to go through the various sections that now refer to that new, to the new article.
Correct, but there will be amendments made to one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 other areas. Wait, is it 11? It is in fact 11.
So we do need to adapt these individual, how we go change this, how it goes to be. And we both, each one of them.
No, this is all done through that one.
It's spoken through as one.
There is one thing, either pass or fail.
So what's your opinion when the reading of article A is fairly wrong?
It is fairly wrong.
I mean, I'm happy to read it because it looks good.
I don't really think it's necessary, it should have been posted and available. I don't really think you need to do that and it is wrong. And the changes that she made, that she asked me to make, really did just make it clear that when they were going for injunctive relief, we actually spoke to the process for injunctive relief in this and before we didn't. So her changes were very specific and she outlined them in a memo that was very helpful.
Right, yeah, I think it's important that people know that we specifically want a legal, the town's legal council that would essentially be the people that would have to, you know, enforce the town's rules on this had input so that we weren't just grafting and replacing something else that was ineffective.
Correct.
So is the board having questions on what was just described? Is everyone on the board game? At this point, if I'm not going to read this whole thing, I'm going to make sure that the folks will show up here. It's a public hearing, if you do have any questions about this, now would be the time to ask because I'm now going to, if there are any, go over the individual, the individual zoning articles that need to be changed and I agree with those changes. Okay, so here again, then it's the public hearing is still open, so we do, if there are questions, we can certainly address them before the, before the board takes the final vote. As a matter of fact, the vote for the board would be to either move this to the law in March or not. That's your, that's your charge, our charge. All right, so follow along with me as I am not going to read the current, I'm just going to read those new language. And first one is for.
First one was the amendment.
Well, first one is the amendment, doesn't have our associated papers. But the proposed change is CRA-A-1000, amendments, conflicts, penalties, administration, enforcement, and separability dated 12/14/2022. Article 107, which is the industrial zone, the change to the language would read, please refer to section A1000 dot 004 of this ordinance. And again, a lot of these are going to sound the same, but they're all referring back to that new, that new district article. Article 205, showing protection ordinance, the change would be to please refer to section A1000 dot 003 dot 002 of this ordinance. Article 209 is from our management zone. The new language would be, please refer to section A1000 dot 003 dot 002 of this ordinance. Article 302, zoning, of delay, the proposed wording change would read, please refer to section A1000 dot 002 dot 002 of this ordinance. Article 303 is the sign ordinance, the wording change is, please refer to section A1000 dot 004 of this ordinance. Article 402 is the campground ordinance and the proposed wording change is, please refer to section A1000 dot 004 of this ordinance. Article 402 is the, also campground ordinance. Okay, and so we have two for the campground ordinance?
One falls under the declaration, one falls under the violation.
Okay, so under, under the second one here, the change would be, please refer to section A1000 dot 002 dot 002 of this ordinance. Article 408 is our, our noise ordinance. And the change is, please refer to section A1000 dot 002 dot 002 of this ordinance. Article 409 is sewage sludge and residential septicage. The change is, please refer to section A1000 dot 003 dot 002 of this ordinance. Again, article 409, sewage sludge and residential septicage, the application ordinance. Change is, please refer to section A1000 dot 002 dot 002 of this ordinance. Another one for article 409, under savings clause, please refer to section A1000 dot 004 of this ordinance. And the last one is article 415, small end energy systems. And the proposed change is, please refer to section A1000 dot 002 dot 002 of this ordinance. Questions from the board, if you have anything to add further, please.
No, all of, all of the changes that we make significantly to each of these individual ordinances are really just bookkeeping. So they're taking, they can go and replace some ordinance to see what applies to the petition statement.
Sure. Any questions on this?
I never know the ordinances that didn't happen in the course of, of course, around. And so those recovered, however, anyway?
They did, they are, yes.
I did, but didn't have the word, I didn't look.
So as regards to one of the proposed change, I already said we recovered that and that's why it's not here. And that's the, the new enforcement section.
That's correct.
On the issue.
We made the wording to that, to that ordinance earlier, the issue, well, late last year.
So the enforcement is new, it doesn't need. Okay, you have all those ducks in the raw. Thank you. So as I said, it's a public hearing, so if anyone in the audience has questions, please, please indicate so. Seeing no hands and hearing nothing, we'll close the public comment section for, for this article. Bring back the board, the board's pleasure.
Make a motion with this, uh, with this.
No.
This March.
This March, mark this March.
And we say, A1000, the, the, everything we discussed. A1000, you have all, all of the changes necessary in the various.
Second.
Motion by Peter Coffin, second by Robin Carter, thank you Robin. For the reception. All in favor, so I have my proposed extensions, so that's unanimous. And just for the record, we have five voting records drawn on the table, so thank you Robin.
My pleasure.
Track us in the board, the end. So how is it that the final answer is all in favor of the last one?
And how was this going to be around, we discussed last year about using a pre-tuned presentation that they, this is.
It looks like we have something to that effect on our board business.
Oh, okay.
Well, we got a report business request to, on the dispersion of taxes to town.
County, yes. No, no, I'm asking about the, I'm asking about, is this entire package, can you find it in the ballot? Or do we have a pre-giving version that explains it?
Well, because last year we talked about, did we put one, one, short description, a short description and then the full text is available.
Correct.
Right.
And that's what I'm asking you.
So.
Okay. At that time, that was what the board wanted to do. It's, I didn't hear any pushback or disappointment by voters about the, the reefer descriptions. I don't know if anybody else.
I think it was about permission to have a pre-type description.
What we're trying to do is, isn't 17 pages and.
Correct.
But as I said, you just got it.
And I think that this one lends itself particularly well to a description. Because it seems pretty technical when you look at it.
Yeah, it's like, it's sort of.
Right, right, because, because part of what was added were two lines that sound like they're the same thing, but actually talk about different processes, different legal processes. It might even, it might be less easy for folks to understand that are just lay folks. And a description could clarify that. And I'm happy to do either way.
Well, unless the board decides to do it differently, it's still going to be the way, the way we did it last year. So if the board wants it different, that's the time.
I just, having made the motion to move this, I did want to make sure that the, the idea on that, the exact order.
And it's clear that the information is available. It's available at the holding place, they can, people can see the actual text before they even go into vote, if they choose to.
And someone's also available, once we close, I mean, it, it's got to be able to provide to.
It absolutely.
It's a bill, it's a someone that will go out online, but all attributed to this on. All right, so the next one for planning board, for the citizens' petitions, is the one that you have in front of you for article 206, the accessory monuments. There is proposed, there's current language and proposed new language. And I'm going to read for you the, the, everything in the current language for section 206.4J. Remains, but there's an additional line at the end and I'm going to read that additional language. And the additional language is, in determining if the existing septic system is functioning properly, an inspection report on the system prepared by a licensed New Hampshire septic system inspector will be provided to the planning. And that's replacing the language that reads, if deemed necessary by the health officer or evidence shown by, in the form of certification by a state or the entry license study system designer.
Correct, so the difference is, it's an inspector that provides the installation, not a designer.
Correct.
Since inspection of the onsite system is what is required.
Right. So.
Question from Dixon. I'm away from the health officer to make a determination, says the, the, the evidence, so the health officer can look at whatever. So it's not, it's not, it's not, it's, it's not made, it's, we shall go.
Correct, correct, and it doesn't become difficult for the health officer to ask for it in instances where it might be difficult to ask for it.
Exactly.
Just like, it's just required, just do it.
Yeah.
I've loved the children in my neighborhood for 40 years, but just do it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it sounded not easy.
Okay, question board. This is a public hearing, there are any questions from the audience on this proposed change? Raise your hand, or do something. Close public comment then on this one and be happy to take a motion.
I'll look at the, um, forward article 206.4J, changes as read, to the March 1st.
Second.
Motion by Peter Coffin, second by Robin Carter, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose extensions. Captain Nance lays the town's fine in favor of the proposed extensions. Okay, so the next part, it is a little bit different in that the next three proposed zoning changes have come in by the citizen petition process of our, of our, our SAIS. And the planning board's responsibility here is the whole public hearing. And the, and at the end of each one, to take a vote to either approve or disapprove of the proposal. And the approve or disapprove language appears under the verdict on the ballot. And that is curved.
6754, no, 6754.
6754, Roman 3, which says, a notation on the ballot stating the planning board's approval or disapproval, shall immediately follow questions in scripture. So, so we have three of the authorships sitting here and you can ask if you're finding them sitting on the board table for discussion.
I am, and the reason for that is that this is one of the few times where even as a planning board member, you actually get to use your opinion. This is one of the few times throughout the year where you can conduct your business based off of your personal opinion. Because I would also argue that even if anyone signed a petition, they wouldn't be forced to refuse themselves from discussion as a planning board member or a citizen's official.
I guess I see it slightly differently when you offer a petition as opposed to signing it. But I just wanted to make sure we got the record because, because I.
And I, and I offered these because I was approached by citizens that wanted to go forward with them and I offered out, because I agree with the content of that.
Right, and you promote them and you got the signatures and, so you'll need a package of your personal.
Yeah, and like I said, this is one of the few times where I think that can engage in this type of stuff as a board member as well as being able to engage on your personal thing.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was out on the table. Anybody else have any questions or issues on that?
You're elected to be voting with this, the select board member on the committee to sit there on the same part. I don't, does the, does the select board also vote on these? I don't believe.
No, it doesn't, like, just, I think it's just planning board. The select board, again, when the citizen's petition comes into the select board, they're supposed to make sure that the wording is correct, the signatures are valid before passing one to us. I'm assuming that since we have them, that action is taken once.
Yes, that, yes, these were necessarily turned into the town clerk for verifying the voters coming in the select board. There is, the reason these two articles have similar language is because the, one of the select board members called the DRA to mask up the language on the one with more signatures on the building, on the building article. And he got advice that it could potentially be illegal because it eliminates a permit for that type of item. I called the DRA 30 minutes later and got a conflicting opinion that they didn't feel that it was an inappropriate or illegal article. So, so in both of these, we'll hear that as of right now, that we're still waiting legally, reached up to the New Hampshire Miss, in a school association, I know Susan had reached up to them today to see if their legal department could give an offer. The intention would be an attempt to, if it's, if once, if the, if the first one that was generated was bound to be valid and legal should have passed, the intention would be to leave that one and figure out whether to draw the other one if possible. If not, there is a potential that they could both end up on the ballot because it's all kind of permission simply to have that backup article generated.
Can I just ask, so I, I see Peter also signed them and I got the sense that verification was authorized. Would not necessarily, would be in a situation to feel like you needed to accuse yourself of signing May?
No, no, I, I, my opinion is that I believe that it is quite likely in this situation.
Okay.
Okay, so. I could just take it in order, however, I know some of those are very specifically legal or legally. I'm not sure about those two. Uh, I'm going to take them in order because they are, just so that I don't have any bad assumptions here. Which means that the agency will be third one. So the first one, and I'm going to read it and then I'm going to ask if they offer it as a, the words of losing money involved in offering. Will we take it further? So, according to our town administration, our select board administrator person, there were 59 signatures for this petition. We only have first page, so we only see some of the signatures that are installed. But they only need 25 of our 59. And this is for, to see if the town board to have followed language with the town ordinances, section 300, building, article 301, buildings and building lots. And the proposed language is, for non-plant structures such as sheds or carports that are 168 square feet or less with a height of less than 12 feet and are not placed on a permanent foundation, no permit is required. Additionally, it may be placed on site or rear yards, no less than five feet from the property line. The structure would still have to meet the required front and set back for the political zoning. The structure may still be subject to a safety inspection by the code enforcement officer. Okay, so again, this is, this is a public hearing, so we'll do the board first and then the public comment first. So Chris, do you have any words to say?
Yeah, the intention of this was, there are a lot of people out there that purchase prefabricated sheds. A lot of people are seeking relief from the 20-foot setback requirements that was required on all boundary sides. And I think an issue the town has had over the years, because a lot of our other ordinances are either orderly written or they've been enforceable or they had conflicting definitions over the years. It's caused a lot of folks to, there's a lot of loopholes. And the more restrictive you have with the variance of smaller items, the more you're going to find people exploiting loopholes in a more egregious fashion. Some of the instances, you know, that I brought up in previous meetings when we talked about it where, you know, somebody can't have a small shed where they have that lawnmower and stuff like that without having to go through the zoning board of adjustment. But they can park a 53-foot tractor trailer trailer right on that property line with no separation. And there's nothing that can prevent them from doing that type of activity. And initially, you know, this came to be by some people that lived in some of the more compact areas, such as, you know, downtown, you know, seasonal residences that have become permanent, year-round residences over the years. And some of them went into situations where they may have a small yard. And some of them went into situations where they may have a small yard and if they wanted a shed, it would have to be essentially directly in the middle of the yard. Um, but then I actually had some people approach me that have larger properties that want to be able to put a shed over on the edge of their property as well. And one of the, one of the reasons that came up is if you've got to force me to put a twenty feet in, you may have a neighbor that may not want a shed that close, but I used the example before, I'm somebody that has my entire property is pretty wide open. Now, if my neighbor puts something right on their property line that I don't like, that's really on me that I have to look at it. I could have chose to have buffers, barriers, fences, those types of things on my property to not see it. Um, but what's gonna happen is you're gonna have somebody that they're gonna take a shed and put it twenty feet in and I know what they're gonna do with that twenty feet in between the shed and the neighbor's property. They're gonna pile up all the other stuff they don't wanna look at from their house. So it's probably gonna be even more important than I saw going to the neighbors, but, uh, this was just an opportunity to get some relief. I researched, there are many communities in the state of New Hampshire uh, that some of them allow no setbacks for sheds, uh, under certain one square footage. I saw town ordinances, everything from two hundred square feet or less or a hundred square feet or less that don't require permits and don't require setbacks. So this is a brand new territory here. Uh, the reason I came up with that one hundred and sixty-eight square foot, uh, number was based off of speaking with some shed customers that made prefabricated sheds. One of the most popular sizes right now seems to be a twelve by fourteen. A lot of people use those to either drive their lawn tractors, uh, block them in there, uh, or, you know, maybe even a motorcycle or something like that, but I, I thought it was important to just outline that they're not occupied structures, uh, and also not on permanent foundations. So I don't want people pouring uh, concrete foundations or something similar to that at their property line, but that's all I have on that. And I, and I guess, just so I don't have to re-explain everything, the difference between this one and the next one that we're gonna look at is the next one just doesn't reference the no permit being required. The primary reason for no permit required is that there's actually no building code that covers a shed. Uh, I confirm that with our government enforcement officer of the town. Uh, so there's actually no building code that specifies shed. All, all can be subject to general safety inspections.
Okay. Come to the board.
Chris, your question, the twelve by fourteen is a, um, and that's the size of a single car, a garage. Certainly large, but it's a compact, a single car, you know, and, and, uh, from the spirit, um, which I would thought the garage would have something, even if it's mounted on, um, you know, the concrete box, sorry, but the, uh, it's a foundation. That's not a foundation and it's, it's a big stall, um, maybe a big round or whatever, yeah. But I imagine the twelve by fourteen garage would have a, not true?
I don't know, I don't.
I would, I would think at least, I think we.
I think if it's not, I think if, there's a lot less restrictions if it's not.
Alright. I mean, I can understand.
It's not a fix.
Yeah, why I can understand is, uh.
Yeah, because if you were, if you were, if you were to pour fittings, that's part of permanent foundations, so.
No, it's not a, it's not a block foundation.
Yeah.
It's not permanent. It's just a, you know, level, and to lay and put down a concrete box. So the, the no permit, neighbor or nobody else is in a garage or property or five feet in. Uh, and the reason I bring this up is because we've had cases where, especially down in the, the great area, where people put sheds right on the property in cases, okay, um, and the neighbors don't like that because they're out there and they're confused. The neighbors have no idea what they're taking. We have a lot of those in certain cases, the, the, the sheds. It is, it is, but, uh, you are giving an option there. Um, so, that, that's why I brought it up. I think you'll find it great if you could one stick a shed out of a garage, out on the, or a, that, that could be.
Yeah, okay. I understand that, but I, I may, I will always advocate for the individual use of property rights, but the person that's paying the tax.
I would get a way, you know, I, I would assign, I would get that, I think it's a way that possibly a person is making the law of that, putting a shed wherever inside, person just finding a lot of property.
Yeah, no, I, I.
And they do that, right?
Exactly, they, uh, uh, sheds, no sheds, but sheds location.
Well, it's a, you know, whatever you want. Well, for a real house in a current garage and a driveway, you have a lot of places to put it. That's why you might go to the line.
But this isn't limiting it to small lots and.
Correct.
That's the issue that I have is that it, it would be town line and for the most part, we have pretty large lots in town with plenty of room in most cases, uh, to be able to put what you need to put and keep the twenty feet setback. The, the area you're talking about, the growth is lower, I understand, uh, it's tight, you know, but I also see the point that, you know, there's relief for that and it gives, uh, it gives others a chance to go place away in the line.
And I think the, the larger, when I started looking at the large lots of it, I looked at it as myself, as somebody who likes to use a lot of large lot, but I also looked at it as that while we may have large lots, a lot of them aren't developed because it's more cost effective for builders to build on just a complete four envelope when they clear the least amount of space possible because it's more cost effective for them to make more money. So while, while you may have two to three acre lots, rarely do you find more than half a acre there.
Was there any thought about limiting the number or it's, uh, would then, I mean, I would always go language about it at the most.
Yeah, and just to be, before you finish that thought, just to make sure that we're all clear, all the audience is clear, um, we are holding a public hearing. We do not have the opportunity to make any changes to this. So just, but go ahead.
Understood. I just didn't know what the.
You know, that, that never came up in the discussion.
But the, so the answer is, as, no.
Which, yeah, I, I have no issue with, that would be my concern is this is also permission to put up multiple temporary structures.
Yeah, but like I said, the, the one thing I would respond is that because there's so many other loopholes, like right now, someone, somebody could line your entire property, tractor trailer trucks. And it's not, it's not that I could stop them from doing that.
We do have a lot of this, wait.
What's that?
We do have a lot of this, wait, only to, only to home occupied businesses.
As somebody that owns thirty-five thousand ton military trucks, I know a lot now.
So as I expressed earlier in the discussion on this, um, I mean, I, I understand the whole property rights statement, but I do think that these setbacks are there for a reason and, uh, I could have supported perhaps something less than twenty feet, but I think five feet is, is, uh, is only then too far, uh, in the other direction, so.
And again, I can, the small will treat that, um, but there's nothing particularly in the, the size of garage, uh, two by six.
Right, and, and that's why we also have the high restriction on it.
Yes, if you're going to, if you're.
There, there's a certain amount of pitch you have unless you wanna collapse on the first heavy, heavy snow.
Right. Um, okay.
Yeah.
And, and let me say this, I've always said it before, like, I, I wouldn't want an entire quarter thing. I do not represent every one in town by a long shot.
Right.
You really represent people. I do represent the population of the town and that's why I work for them and, and, and I agree, and so that's why I said, well, let's push it forward and if it goes, it goes. If the townspeople look for it, they do. If not, they don't.
Right. For everybody who has that property right that they want to use right up the line, it's surrounded by people who may not want their rights to, uh, you know, cover their, their.
And they not responsible, and they can maintain the twenty foot block for vegetation if they want.
Any other thoughts or, or, or? Alright, the lower row, is there are comments on this one? Nothing on the right side, Susan?
Just had a.
And, and if you could come up and, please, and state your name and your address.
Susan Prescott, Fifty Little River Road in Kinston. Um, I just had a couple of questions on this that are concerning to me, um, non-occupied structures. Does that mean, could, could a chicken coop be non-occupied or is it occupied by chickens? So it's occupied.
I think a non-occupied is human occupation.
Okay, so chicken coop, doghouse, goat barn, anything like that could be
Yes.
involved in this, okay. Um, gazebos, could I put up a gazebo?
Yeah.
Okay, and there's no limit on how many sheds, gazebos, doghouses or chicken coops?
Is there a, there's no limit now?
Yeah, but.
No, but there.
It would be, you know, it wouldn't even need a building permit.
Big men, too.
Right.
Correct. As long as it's not the, um, the height and the square foot restriction.
Okay, alright.
We need one.
Those are my concerns. I just, I don't like, I don't know. I know, I understand that there aren't any, we don't really have a shed ordinance or anything right now, but these are, these are just my concerns. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
But I, but I, right now, I don't, depending on how they're constructed, I don't know if doghouses and chicken coops would be the definition of the current structure that requires.
Could I add that for?
Possibly HDC, but maybe not really.
All I know is, all I know is just because I am on HDC that when I talked with Robert Stewart about a shed issue uh, months and months ago, that he told me that shed, even a homey boat shed or, you know, a, a made shed would.
A shed is specifically, is specifically divided, defined as a structure.
Right.
And.
And that's what Robert Stewart told me was that where it is defined as a structure, it would need a building permit. So that's what he told me. Now, I don't know if people are getting them, you know, getting building permits or not, but technically he told me that they need to. So that's all.
Here, thanks.
Well, there's, there's a, it's a, that size, I don't know, shit, what, I mean, with the artists who were doing shit, they did not need a permit. I thought, can I tell all?
Oh, we had a listing status.
Not that I recall.
I don't believe so.
Not that I remember.
Can look at their, uh.
Okay, but I, I thought, because somebody wrote that to me years ago and I didn't, I didn't find, I don't recall, at least since I've been on this.
Okay.
It was one of the last. Just because that doesn't mean it wasn't the case, so.
Any other comments, uh, Virginia?
Virginia Morris, one eighty-eight Main Street. Um, I was gonna make a comment, but first, Peter, I didn't hear what you're saying, so what I'm going to make a comment about might have already been answered. What was it you were just asking?
Oh, I was asking in the past, probably before me, was there any, uh, ordinance in this town that references a small shed?
Oh.
You know, if, like, you could, in prior homey boat laws, you got some, you built your small garden shed, maybe a greenhouse or small. That maybe was one of the certain square foot that didn't require that. That's all I asked. I, I would like to know if there was.
Um, my comment is that, uh, there is relief for people who do not have the space for a twenty-foot setback. There is relief. If your piece of property, um, means that your shed would end up in the middle of your front lawn, then there is a way to get relief, to go to the, um, ZBA and show your property and your need to house lawn mowers or motorcycles or whatever and get relief. Therefore, anyone who has a difficult piece of property has a way of solving their problem. Therefore, I'm not in favor of this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Once? Twice? A little close public comment then on this one, bring back the board for this further discussion. If we can have it otherwise, I'd be looking for a motion to either again, the wording is approve or disapprove.
I'll move the, uh, the board to disapprove the, um, official order of non-structure within, uh, five feet, sorry, five feet.
Is there a second? I will second it. So motion by Peter Coffin, second by myself. Further discussion. Call for votes. So the vote is you're voting on the wording to add a word disapprove to this article. All in favor of that motion, if I was in, I, I raise hands, maybe, three, and those opposed to motion two. So the motion carries, so this will carry the text disapproved, uh, along with this, uh, article valid. So the, the, the three way or two opposed in all sections. The second one, uh, I guess Chris said is very much the same except that it takes away the building permit, uh, wording, which, which on the previous one said that building permit is required. That part was ignored, otherwise it was essentially the same. Yep. Does the board wish to have more discussion in this before I, this one? I'm assuming you've talked yourselves off of this one way, although I know that is there a public comment? Seeing none, a close public comment on this one. And, um.
I'll, I'll move again, same reasons, too big a close, this, this, this group.
Motion to disapprove of Peter Coffin. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ryan. Further discussion, board. I'm gonna call for hands, uh, in favor of that motion, if you can. Three, and opposed to the motion, two. Well, same, we gotta do that. So the motion carries, uh, three way or two opposed in all sections. So this one asks for the one we listed prior to it, will appear in the back with the wording, uh, disapproved from, uh, from, from this vote. I'm going to read the third and final petition, uh, one article and, uh, and I will ask if, uh, if Chris would like to just talk a little as well. So this is, uh, regarding a change to the historic district, uh, commission, uh, section of the zoning. There, again, as with any petition, petition to article twenty-five registered voters are required to get this onto, uh, onto the hearing and, uh, the indication here is that there were thirty-seven signatures, so were more than enough to do that. And it reads, shall town vote, uh, to amend following town ordinances, section one hundred, zoning districts, article one oh two, historic, section one oh two point nine guidelines to add a following. And the wording is when making a determination on the application, reasons for denial of an application must be clearly documented and shall be factual and verifiable reasons for denial. Reasons for denial shall not be subjected or based on opinion or speculation. If the historic district commission or parties at the HDC application level other than the applicant requires expert testimony. other than the applicant requires expert testimony or documentation to support the denial, they cannot require the applicant to be responsible for the generation costs associated with such support of denial. This shall not prohibit the historic district commission from making additional regulations to an applicant that are in the spirit of the historic district, asking for voluntary compliance or participation. And that's in quote, so everything in this paragraph is new proposed language to section 102.9 of article 102, uh, zoning. Okay, Chris?
Yes, I'll speak for this one, uh, the people that I spoke with about this, their initial inclination is they actually wanted to register a petition to begin the statutory process to completely dissolve the historic district commission. Uh, and there are very specific statutes that follow that, that does start off with a petition of citizens. I talked a lot of that, I told them I didn't think that that was a good idea, and I didn't think it would be effective in any way, shape or form for them, so I kinda set them back. They came up with this and then they felt that, and I, and I think it's because they feel that some of the decisions made, there's some language in the, in the articles that allow, you know, subjective decisions, there's references to property values or, you know, diminution of property values. And they feel that if the HDC makes a decision based off of that comment, it's, it's near cost to verify that, it's pure speculation. So they wanted some language that they felt short of protections and the people that bear the cost of maintaining that historic district. Uh, it's, you know, it's very difficult, and I explained to them that this may not get a lot of traction because there's only so many people that are subjected to the historic district commission and all the other citizens of town that get to enjoy it aren't really burdened by the restrictions that are put on it, so I don't know if you're gonna get support of the townspeople, but, um, I at least got them off the idea of trying to completely dissolve the HDC, and they came up with some language that they felt might offer some sort of protection to the citizens that are within this district.
Okay. I'm not able to make comments because I know that there are HDC boards in the audience, so...
Yeah.
Particularly the chair, vice chair of that commission. I consider the HDC as a public district, I'm your, your plenty of rep to the HDC, so I'm party to their decisions and I hold a vote on any application that comes before them, so I certainly have an opinion about this one, and I will, at this time.
Yeah, I would say, HDC is starting to land use board, and it's such as governed by the Andrew Price statute, control of the use boards, and the laws governing, for example, property, uh, property values. There's a rule that if you, uh, unchallenged, professional opinion, professional advisement, and second, real estate, this has, this could negatively affect the possible impact of property, that the board has to take that consideration. So the, uh, the board has the opportunity to present their professional to challenge that, and the board has the opportunity to bring in their professional. Each person, each entity pays for a professional, unless they have a satisfactory, you know, opinion. But that's longstanding, um, procedure. On, is the ZBA, does the, the applicants have to provide, intend to make the case, provide a professional opinion, that the board has to take, do a better. But, um, it's a fine word, a lot, what we do is opinion, whether, for example, in 80 years, if we have a rule that says that has to continue to look like a residence, that's gonna be an opinion, that's why we took it out of the name of the building sector, because it was too much to tell public employee that they were gonna, they were subjective and that this continued to look like, uh, a residential structure or not, so we went to, originally, ZBA, that, you know, it's, it's a fine word. So we are prosecuting, um, opinions, as you pointed out. This is one, was that the article we provided the opinion on, that we provide, right now? That, those are edited, how we done, by state law, it's the language board, and I don't think this would be legal, this, uh, the article would stand legal challenge.
Okay. Well, it doesn't, I think, what, what you're getting at, it doesn't prevent, it doesn't prevent the HDC from seeking their own legal counsel, but it offers protection, or if they wanna get an expert to voice their side of it, it just can't, this prohibits you from forcing the act to say, well, if you believe that, then you need to, then, essentially, no, you're correct. They, they, yeah, that, that act, if they want to hire their own, they can't be forced to hire the services of a consultant, that would essentially just affirm the opinion of the HDC. The HDC would be responsible for hiring, if they wanted somebody to come in and affirm whatever their thought or process on it was, they would be responsible. This is essentially, so they have to make sure that they can't try and downshift that cost to an applicant.
Can forgive my ignorance, but has that happened? That the expert testimony or whatever opinion that they've sought, they've then turned around and asked applicants to pay the cost of that?
Meanwhile, I don't think the HDC, a lot of this information's coming from the folks that I spoke with, that the HDC had frustrations and concerns, to, to the best of my knowledge, you know? And I, I don't recall.
Well, I have to say, it's like, the first sentence, first two sentences, fine. I think my question was specific to, you know, is this a matter of people just not understanding the process and being, given the opportunity to hire their own expert to present testimony and, and whatever, and feeling like that was something they would be told they needed to do to get a, which is, I mean, it's semantics, but, yeah.
Uh, I think, for example, high control of services and things like that, would be, that's part of something that the applicant hasn't paid for, uh, because it's, it's the applicant trying to enable the board to make a decision based on professional advice, they can't, uh, these, and things like that, and, um, we try to be, and, and, but I'm wrong, not paying for professional services, because we aren't engineers, we aren't, if you want to, experts. But it, but it's, if an applicant's advantage to have an expert, you know, provide advice other than just to say, oh, I think it might, so I don't see that in hand, so.
And I don't really have intention just to prevent those types of things, and that's why I specifically talked about subjective items where if somebody was going to say, yeah, this will diminish property values, or, that's not terribly correct. I, I, I don't know a lot of issues.
My question is, is this a solution in search of a problem? And, um, I, I think that what I think it is, you can give specific examples where people have denied something that they have a reasonable obligation to be able to do because somebody had an opinion that that wasn't happening, you know, that, that, that fit the historic district. But they have pretty good guidelines of how they're gonna make a decision, and you can take real good examples. Does a multi-thousand square foot construction, um, grocery store fit in a historic district? And they made a decision that not, I believe, isn't something that fits the target, you know, what about that, but not there, so, um, I, I think that, you know, they're making judgments, and that's something that's gonna be the good judgment, um, you know? How a store is, you know, aware of. And, so, you know, I'm just, I'm just wondering, this is something that is, a problem that we have, but they're constantly denying things.
And I can't speak to the personal concerns, as I didn't with them and I didn't experience them, I just, I think, the general consensus I got is, there's a feeling of overwhelming frustration that some of the people living in the HDC are being beholden to rules and opinions, forced on them, oftentimes by people that themselves may sit on boards that don't live there themselves and might be holding these things. So they were just looking for some type of relief, and they felt that, other than trying to look for the complete dissolution of it, they wanted to come up with something to feel that gave them some type of protection.
Case of, you know, if you buy in to an area and, you know, restrictions are, you know, rules, now, we had a case recently where, um, the first proposal was that it could fit with the town rules, and then modify that and came back, HDC test, so, um, so it was, uh, in accordance with the manification, and pretty rules, and got rid of all, and, you know, so you can make this work, and they did. Um, and, and so, I have seen a problem that needs fixing.
What's the process, if any, to appeal a determination on an application?
Because it's a deal.
So there's a process to push that further?
Yeah, and there's, there's many, there's many, city in the town, there's always, there's always a degree, there's always a backstop, and oftentimes, if you have a secondary, so if you've got one and you don't get really faith, you have the option to go instead.
Glenn, do you have anything to weigh in on this one before I open up?
Well, yes, I did.
Oh, I figured I'd give you that opportunity.
Um, as, as I was reading through this, it struck me that I don't understand what process is undertaken by the HDC here at all, because I don't force both meetings. But it is interesting that this particular citizen's petition is saying, whatever specialist the applicant wants to provide and pay for is fine. Um, the issue is one of, if there is additional expert testimony requested, that the applicant have to pay for that as well. And I have to say, I believe that what they're saying, that concept, is true legally in the state of Manhattan. The, the planning board is the sole land use board that can actually make an applicant pay for not only their own study, but a third party study on behalf of the board. The, I don't see that the HDC has granted that same ability. Now, I don't know if they ever do that, I, I don't deal with them enough to know, but in the case of the planning board, and we do it often, that if a land scientist presents information that the board isn't comfortable with, we can go to a land scientist and have the applicant pay for that professional as well. But that ability is reserved to the planning board in state statute, the way I read state law. There are lots of instances in the enabling legislation for the planning function that allow similar things, and they group them under land use boards. This is not one, the third party, uh, additional review is only for planning units. And so I believe that this citizen's petition is only verifying what state law already says.
Well, uh, I'm gonna give you an example right now, the, uh, the different history of the gas station and the applicant's actions, where it's a matter of itself, so that, and the applicant might just won't pay for that, and so it would have been required of the applicant. Right, but that's mainly to the, to the, to the, that the ZBA, that typically is not the language the way they're, the way they're putting the, the structure, most of the time, the ZBA, that's what's being appealed now, is because the ZBA did not require not do that, because we, it was connected, uh, the planning.
I think it's different if the ordinance, if the ordinance allows, or is, is allowed, you see the statute, because there's no, there's no issue, there's no need in that. And part of it is the HDC, the later playing. I, I, I don't, I don't see it for any other land use board.
And I'm not seeing it under HDC.
I see it only as being that, that sort of, what could be perceived as a double expenditure by an applicant, or is it double expenditure by an applicant? I only see it authorized to state law for the planning, not for any other land use board. I'm not, I'm not saying that I think that the HDC actually does that. I don't know the board, well, no, to know if they require those kinds of things. Um, but if they did do that, I think that that is something that they should consider getting counsel in attorney, but I think that that would not be something they're allowed to do.
So, again.
So from the perspective of a reiterative standing statement, that, that is... It's sort of superfluous, but also I don't see necessarily the damage. The, the damage I see from this, from this language is, those first two lines are very accusatory.
Right.
And, um, saying something, saying a decision by a board is simply subjective when the requirements of the board actually go directly to appearance?
Uh, yeah.
Then, I'm sorry, it is very, it's very subjective, it's subjective by its nature, and the town actually asked them and said, yes, the things you're looking at are the, the negative spaces in a facade, building facade. Well, I'm sorry, my take, and my philosophy on the negative spaces on a facade could greatly differ from an applicant who wants to propose just sheet glass windows, um, in a storefront, and that may just not be what a historic district would feel comfortable supporting. That, that from my perspective is not subjective, it is interpreted in ordinance.
Right.
But there, that's their responsibility. Um, so I, my, it was up to ask, you're probably sorry that you asked me, but my, my take here is, that what is being said in the second half of this is really a reiteration, I think, of state law, and if people feel more comfortable reiterating it, and that happens all the time, I don't have a problem with that. My problem really is, those first two sentences seem, um, accusatory, and I find them unsupportive from my experience with the HDC. Now, again, I don't live in town, I've never been subjected to a decision by the, the, uh, HDC, so it's my opinion.
And the first part of the first sentence is, is fine, unnecessary. It says, when making a determination on the application, reasons for denial of an application must be clearly documented and shall be factual and verifiable reasons.
All of this was taken.
And all of those, and we just got that reiterated to us, that we have to, to give reasons. We always have, but, um, I believe the HDC, like, clearly is about to make sure that they give reasons when they, if they, if the denial, like, certainly, well, they have a reason. Um, and not just because, uh, we don't think so. This, you know, so, then you get a, a, a reason for denial should not be subjective, and that's just the, kind of, to the sta, our statutes and the state statutes.
Okay, other thoughts? Before we move further, then, will there be a public comment? So, folks, if, if anyone else, Susan, come on up.
Sure, thanks. Susan Prescott, 50 Little River Road in Kingston. We do a brief bit of our two lines of our case. Um, in our guidelines, I want to, 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 to show you how we run. In consideration, in considering appropriateness of an application, the commission shall consider, among other things, the effect that the exterior facade of the building will have when viewed in relation to the surrounding buildings in the district. That's subjective. Look at the proposal, and then we say, well, how will that, what, what effect will that have in the neighborhood? That is subjective. The change, if any, in the amount of noise congestion and traffic that the proposed building or use will create in the district. Whether the proposal is on the design or materials, or for a purpose or use inconsistent with, and detrimental or injurious to the buildings, to buildings and purposes or uses upon adjoining lands, whether such proposal is such that it will detract from a character and quiet dignity of the Kingston Historic District. Well, that's pretty subjective, too. Well, that's pretty subjective, too, because depending on who's sitting on the board, you could say, well, I don't think that will detract, or I do think that will detract. We have had one denial in five years. That, um, that, that proposal, that application, they had, they could go to the ZDA if they were unhappy with our decision, that's what, that's what their relief is. Usually what we do is, we're always open to consulting with people before an application is put in, many times an applicant will come once or twice before they put in their official application, just because, you know, they're looking for guidance, they're looking for, we don't, you know, we would never hear, I mean, we, we would say, okay, here's the fence that you're proposing, here are four other fences that are in historic district, so, you know, these are what, um, we're preparing your proposed fence to. We have, like I said, only denied one application in five years. So, um, we're an open board, people can come in, if they have a problem with us, then they should come in and talk with us, if they're feeling aggrieved or, um, something. Second part of this is true, in that we've not, in my history, that I've, since I've been on the commission, have we ever, um, required expert testimony? And we certainly wouldn't pass that one, like you said, because it's not legal. That's all.
Susan, I know you introduced yourself and you addressed that you didn't.
I'm the chair of Historic District Commission as well.
Thank you. I can, yes.
Okay.
I think that's important for the.
Sure, yes, yeah, yeah.
What context is this?
And if anyone has questions about how the HDC runs, then come to a meeting and, and see, or watch on YouTube, because those are televised as well.
And so none of these are my personal attorneys over there, HDC, I've never had any time to see out, but, but these were coming to me from citizens that didn't want to put those up their act, and I'm bringing something forward, and I just wanted to talk them off the ledge of attempting a complete dissolution of the HDC.
Which, you know, that would be a shame in my opinion, but that's my opinion.
Right, and obviously if it came to that, and it came to a vote, the town would be there, you know, with the town's judgment on it. The, the amount of good that a well-maintained historic district earns to the town in the way of, uh, community, well-being, um, one could say, or economic development in some cases.
Tourism, charm.
Right.
There's a lot to, there's a lot to go into.
Anyway, there's a lot of possible things, and, uh, the town would put the HDC to create historic districts, and, uh, if it came to a vote to dissolve, then that would be the town's vote as well.
That's right, that's right. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else, Virginia?
Long time stiff. Virginia Morris, 188 Main Street, and I am the vice chair of Historic District, um, Commission. Uh, several things. Uh, first of all, we've reached out to real estate agents and, um, have worked through the selectman's office to make people aware that when they buy a piece of property in historic districts, one or two, that they are in the historic district. Most, it, it could be a slip up that you didn't realize you purchased a house there, but, um, you, you try really hard to have people know that. When they, uh, finally purchase the house and it goes through, and all the information comes into the select board and, um, so forth, a letter goes out to each one of those new homeowners, saying, welcome to Historic District One or Two, you can find the ordinances that regulate this online, et cetera. So there's always a letter, um, that way. So we try very hard for people to understand that they have purchased property there and what that might be all about. Um, as Susan said, we've only had one denial in the last five years. I, I should have counted up how many approvals, because we've had many, many approvals, I didn't do that. Um, if there is a denial, our, um, regulations state that we, well, we have to make a decision in seventy-two hours, I think, and let the applicant know there was approved or denied in writing. And if there is a denial, we need to send that by certified mail, and, and we must give specific reasons for the denial. And so that is all written in our ordinances and our regulations. So that first couple of lines, um, we really do have to do that. Um, as far as, um, property values lowering, or, uh, property values, if you didn't do what the Historic District Commission asked, that is, I've written up lots of, um, certificates one way or the other, and that has never been a reason for denial, that by not doing what we said, you would lower property values, so, I guess it could happen. And I'd like to talk, uh, and also about experts. We do have a line item in the budget for Historic District Commission to get experts to help them. As far as I know, we've never asked the applicant to do that. Um, even in a big case, um, like the Hannaford case, we did have experts, but they were on our, um, bill, if you will, they provided their own, we did not provide them. I don't know what the planning board did about that, but we didn't do that, and we have our own line item to pay for that. Often people bring their own, so you want to show us a new siding that you think would be appropriate, we ask, gee, bring us a sample, we'd rather see it than the brochure. So we have a sample. But sometimes they bring the roofing expert or the siding expert and talk about why this is good, why it looks like real wood, but it's some kind of, um, man-made fabric or material, and so they often bring their own and, um, um, give us that kind of information. As far as, um, judgment and whether it's opinion or not, yes, because it is, um, what are, what are the words, factual and not, um, subjective or based on opinion or speculation. It, it is subjective often. However, the members of the commission, um, have a lot of training. We go to state conferences, we've had town training, we do online training. We use lots of resources so that we know what we're talking about to the best of our ability. National, uh, New Hampshire Association, uh, Preservation Alliance, we refer to them and get their resources. The National Register of Historic Places, uh, New Hampshire, um, Division of Historical Resources, those are all resources available to us when we have questions. We also have probably fifteen books in the library that are available to any applicant, and they can go and take those books out. But we also give them copies of things, that's why this book is falling apart, is because we'll say, you have, um, a Greek Revival style house, here are the kinds of things that are characteristics of a Greek Revival house. You want to put on a porch, here are some ideas that fit, and then, in this particular one, here are some ideas that really don't fit very well. And so they're not just for the board, they're for the applicant, and we make copies and give them to the applicant, say, take a look at this. So there's a lot that goes into making the kinds of decisions that we make, and I believe there's a lot of compromising and negotiation in which we understand that it's an expensive proposition to keep houses, uh, up to a standard that, um, would be expected, any good quality house, but especially the requirements in historic district. And we've modified some of our, um, decisions because things like, um, I won't say violent, man-made siding has become so realistic looking that, um, sometimes we allow that, and so we've made a lot of changes to, not a lot of changes, but a lot of, um, compromises with the people that have come to us. So I'm surprised that, um, since we've only had one turned down in five of the last five years, that people seem to be upset because, um, we haven't had people come in and be upset with us. They're upset, they should come in. You can come in anytime, you don't have to have a, have a formal application and say, I'm thinking of doing this to my house, or I'd like to build a garage or a barn, give me some ideas of what will work, so they don't invest in, let's say, a set of garage plans or barn plans that we say, you know, this, this isn't going to pass muster. So people can do that and get the lay of the land before they invest any money on purchase materials. Um, we also know there are some things that people can do to their homes that work. Put on a side porch, you can make a nice, safe side porch. However, if that's visible from the road, Historic District Commission is going to say, look at your front porch, see how your front porch looks? Your side porch is visible from the road, I know it's safe the way you want to do it, but this one has a little post or a finial or whatever, make some mild modifications to your side porch and steps so that it blends into the house. So we work with people so that they can, um, accomplish what they want to accomplish and still fit with the, um, character of the district and maintain the quality of their homes. I have literally hundreds of articles that talk about the value to the homeowner and to the town of keeping the economic value of the home, and the quality of the home impacting the economic value of the businesses, the whole town, and that individual's, um, property for, um, I'd say resale value, I guess. So there are lots of reasons to keep our historic district, and I really wish the people that were fearful should come in and speak to the Historic District Commission members and.
Well, maybe they're watching.
Maybe they're watching.
And maybe they're watching, and maybe they're coming.
Well, that'd be fine, uh, and we're always looking for members to join the board.
Very good.
And you don't have to live in historic districts to join the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Scott.
Good evening. Scott, 189 Main Street, I am in Historic District. Um, I'd like to echo some of the things that were already said here. I agree with Glenn, those first two sentences are accusatory, almost attacking, and I think that the historic district is an asset to the town. Master Plan points out several points that, you know, encourage the historic district, maybe expand the district, um, encourage historic preservation, but we should be thanking people that are on the board instead, you know, this makes me sound kind of hostile. Um, I was going to point out also that, that the applications that I've seen have not been, and, and mean or nasty or denials, it's been more of a cooperative thing. The board works with the applicant to come up with a solution that, you know, fits in with the town. I've seen them working, just in the last couple of years, they worked with the Josiah Butler House, the most historic house in town, to add that barn back, they worked on how that could be done and blend in. They worked with Rick's Commercial, you know, he wanted to do some seating out in front, he wanted to do some, uh, stair changes on the side, they worked with them. Brand new construction, corner of Scarlet Northern Main Street. You know, the first plan came in, looked like a mess, a half, half Cape, half going on, but they worked on this area, had some corner boards, had some turnaround window, had some six over six, you know, make it a colonial or a Cape, but not both. And now you see the result, you know, that's pretty good, the house that blends in, it's good. So the process is working. Now, now Glenn, you mentioned the, um, the first two sentences are accusatory. I was actually more concerned by the bottom sentences that talk about the reason for denial, um, and that they need to be listed out like in detail, they can't be subjective, which we've talked about. But it says, it, it can't be based on opinion or speculation, which tells me that in order to deny someone for, for one of these reasons that might be considered opinion or speculation, you have to go hire an expert, which means the town's HDC budget for experts would have to grow to hire an expert. Take that example of the glass, the glass wall, right, so here comes a house, glass wall, and the board goes, nah, nah, nah. Look around the town, there's no other house with a glass wall. So you start writing the denial letter, and you're looking at this thing, if you're on the historic commission, you look at this and think, wait, is this subjective, based on opinion or speculation? I gotta go hire an expert to come in and say, yes, in this town, there is no house with a glass front. And that just sounds like, you know, counterproductive to what we're trying to do here. And I think it might, is this is almost like a stick for someone who gets denied to beat the town with, right? You didn't do the denial letter properly, you didn't have an expert, therefore, you know, you need to go get an expert and deny properly. It just sounds backwards. Usually the board, land use board, say, Mr. Applicant, prove that your application meets our ordinances. But this is reversing, now the board has to prove the denial. So I, I think that, I think that the, I'm more worried about the bottom section, about those unintended consequences, there's two things, what problem are we trying to solve? And I think we've talked about that before, it's not really a problem with the denial reasons or with the, the funding of the, um, the experts, but I'm more worried about those unintended consequences at the end. If you were on this, if this is the planning boards, the historic commission, and you read some of these rules, you might be like, what do we do? What do we do with the buffer? What do we do with the, um, in-law apartment that we talked about? Now, those are all subjective, I gotta go hire an expert before I deny and get myself in trouble for not denying properly. So my, my recommendation is let the board disapprove of this, and really, let's use this as an opportunity for education. You know, Chris, the people are anonymous, but go back to those people and say, listen, you know, it's, it's not the evil empire that, that they may think it is, it's really a constructive group that works with them to, to achieve the goals of the master plan. Encourage the historic commission, you know, maintaining that look and feel, and that ends up being a big asset to the town. Questions? Questions for anybody?
Thank you, Scott. Anybody else? Once, twice? Okay, we're going to cut off a public comment in this particular department we're hearing, bring back the board. Any board members have further comment or discussion they'd like to have on this?
My, uh, take this is that, I think this, I'm gonna say to anyone who can't have opinions, um, and that's just not how it works. Give maybe a ten, Scott taking his word. This is a sort of chism kind of attempt to give someone, we'll say, you're, um, fighting a best test, and, um, it's, not that I am really getting there, it's only, but it is absolutely the town's people's right to vote on whether or not someone is. It is, but, but, and, and the important information is that, um, this is how these boards work, and this is how the state statutes are set up and how it's determined, it's how the town's boards and other boards are done, and, uh, tell them to hand in a decision, using state statutes. Um, it is, as I said, I don't think it would stand up, but, test, at least that. So, um, we don't have, I can say that to, Mike, I'll make a motion, if you're ready for it, if anyone else has time.
Thank you. Okay. What I thought for this, uh, in my, in my opinion is what I read was, there were people in town that just wanted a board, not necessarily the HDC, but any, any one of these boards. We elected a lot of town people, and they assumed us to do it all, and they expected us to do it all. But in my opinion, I've seen many, many times where approvals have gone forward and we have, have requested the applicant to state certain colors of things when they approve, which proves that it didn't happen anywhere. If you're going to vote, that's.
I don't know, in general, it was a place.
So I read this, all I saw was from town people, they just wanted to make sure things were being checked, things were being, uh, if, if the people in this town that go on this HDC, they feel like they're being, maybe not completely fair, they just want. and they just want it a little bit better, explain why you're waiting for denial. I can see it as a stick. I almost want to like, I don't want to say accountability, but maybe they just needed a better role down in government as to why or not. That's not the way I...
Right, but I've seen the state legislature affirming and being very specific about how denials have been written.
Correct.
And it's nothing new in here. The only difference is they're going against states, but they're like, regulations seem to say that they can't have opinions.
Correct.
And so that would make it invaluable.
So now that I've seen that, I've listened to the HCC talk, and I have not done one of their meetings. And I've heard that they have won denial in the last five years. And their willingness to learn from what people in the town is different than what you want to be specific on, is what I'm getting at. So with that said, I'm going to support this. That's what I was saying.
No, I would not get that.
That's what I was saying.
And all I want to do, I'm kind of, you know, face off with stories that I heard individually. Like I said, I've never had a personal interaction with HCC, but getting some more information from them. I definitely have concerns about this, and I was a person that submitted it on behalf of them. And I just think that you've been at the HCC for many years now. That board works with the applicant to an incredible degree. And as Susan or Virginia pointed out, very often, even though the commission doesn't have to take it, it would count the fact that, you know, if you do a walk, there's going to be an expensive repair or expensive upkeep. But the commission members are very sensitive to the fact that, you know, these people are their neighbors, their fellow residents in town. And they can appreciate the fact that not everybody has unending resources, even though they chose a viable Historic District that has, you know, script rules or regulations on hearings and so forth in other parts of town. But when they have their deliberations and they make a decision, it's very often with the applicant's situation in mind and, you know, try to, and I forget again who said what, but very often trying to strike that balance, you know, by doing our best to meet the rules and the regulations that have been established within zoning and at the same time trying to make it not perhaps an honorous as it could be on an applicant and yet still try and keep the Historic District character to keep the integrity of it because it is a huge asset. So, and I'm glad I got to hear the other side of the coin, but I'm glad folks came here to speak because it is good here. And now the side, like I said, I live in the HCC, so I honestly don't get too heavily involved in any of that stuff. But it is nice to hear that, and I think maybe, I think maybe some of these outris of injustice may have come from, you know, thinking back on my hearing, maybe it's come from secondhand stories, secondhand stories or assumptions that may not be based in the situation that's occurred, but maybe they felt that if they went ahead, that it would have occurred no matter what because of how they wrote this. So, and I will actually, because being the person that submitted this with signatures, I will actually make an objection to this.
Whoa, 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 we want to give some take. I'm here. We close the... Say what?
I do have a point of view on that now.
Could we close by the three or something? Boy, close by the tone, but...
I still have received a proper number of petitions from other citizens, and they signed up with the intention of, you know, that it goes on the ballot. Which I do not need to remove one of the buildup ones as clarification, because of the time and how long it will be legal. I don't think that's an option. And I don't think that's either. But I would emotionally disapprove, complaining, going to disapprove of the petition, citizen's petition more not regarding Historic District Commission.
I say... Okay. So motion by Chris, second by Peter, begging to disapprove of this article and to have that on the ballot along with the question. Further discussion? All in favor, stay on.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extentions? So that's my answer, five in favor, none opposed, and no exceptions. Thank you all for coming out.
Can I ask a question about, about these? Do we see two rules, three disprove, or two of mine just approved?
You mean the vote tally? If you, if you write that a longer, sit in your chair, if you're discussing that, we're really here tonight. Yeah, you want to come over to the chair? All right, so... Um, Glenn?
Yes?
What is this, and I'm going to act with regard to what we're on C1? Is this your, your question?
Yes. Um, there, then, it's also why we have some people in the audience.
Ah.
Some comments.
That's, that's the, the reason why?
Yes, they were.
It's the...
No, they really were not, they did not gather for those reasons.
Okay.
Donna Carter asked me several weeks ago to clarify for her, my interpretation of the workforce housing slash multifamily housing that we allow in town. And my initial reaction was that I believed you could either do multifamily or you could do multifamily development that had a workforce housing component within that district. The word doesn't really, isn't clear if you read it the way it presently reads. It itself explains, if you read it the way it's written, that such developments, such multifamily developments are workforce housing developments.
Yeah, it's not really a slant, it's a bit...
Right, right. But that is not my recollection of what we did in 2010.
You mean when this was created?
When it was created. So I told Donna that I would, initially I thought I could just make the change to clarify and that it would be editorial, and I could just put in a comma between those two functions and make it clear that you could do one or the other. And then I looked at the public record from 2009, and we have the public hearings for the change that happened in 2010. And if anything, those, the minutes of those meetings indicate differently than how I remember the actual. That actually, you do, the only way to do multifamily is if you have a component of workforce housing. And although that's counterintuitive to me and my memory, the only evidence I can see within the actual ordinance falls in section... Falls in section 108, 7, 3, requirements for multifamily dwellings and development. And in F of that section, it says workforce housing. Not more than 50% of the dwelling units in a multifamily dwelling shall be workforce housing. Shall be workforce housing. So if I, if I'm interpreting the minutes from 2009 and reading that, it's saying there is a required workforce housing element in any multifamily development done under this ordinance. And I want to see what anybody that was here with me at that time remembers. Because it is, my memory is completely opposite of what I can see in the evidence. My memory is that you could do either. And I think that when we had a design review on this a couple of years ago, that we looked at a proposal that wasn't that workforce housing intended. I certainly never mentioned it at that point because I think I had completely convinced myself that either was okay. So we need to understand what we were trying to accomplish. I was hoping to get feedback.
And so this is only in C1?
Yes, yes.
Is it the only section where we talked about workforce housing?
It is indeed.
Okay, so nowhere else?
Nowhere else.
That is a huge review this on the 6th, yeah? It's the way that we read it, because it almost seems like they're trying to justify or identify workforce housing, but it says not more than 50% of the dwelling units in the multifamily structure shall be workforce housing. It almost must seem like you could say, "Not less than 50%."
No, I, I, well, I said...
I don't know what to do with that.
If you can't load this in return or not?
If you can read this and say, "Not, it can't be more than," so you could actually do a development with just one workforce housing.
What's that to say? That's what you figured you got? Not less than?
Exactly, so if we, if, if my language is wrong and we are actually saying all workforce housing, I mean, all multifamily developments in town have to have a workforce housing component. If you read that number half, they could impose one that had but one unit that's workforce housing.
You're right.
Except the definition.
Or is it...
In the RSA, multifamily housing is 500 dwelling units.
Is what wrong?
Um, that's for the overall multifamily unit.
Yeah, this is, this is what...
I'm sorry. But that's still just saying, they're just saying any...
They're just... Yeah, multifamily housing is in the contract.
Correct. Multifamily housing, for the purposes of workforce housing development, needs to build a board structure containing 500 dwelling units. So what they're defining is what a multifamily structure is. Yes, that's true, that's part of this thing.
Well, I was... Yeah, I was English.
See, the one, as I, as I look at the minutes of who was there, there are a lot of few of us that were there in 2010.
There's two of you, right?
Yeah, you did, you did. They're here as well, they were in 2009.
They, they actually took place in the fall of 2009.
No, I was not here. So essentially, we have a, I'm aware of what we think it was.
I, I guess, yeah, we got to understand what, what ordinance is saying, right? I mean, it's important for us to be able to say that. And I got to tell you, embarrassingly, as a professional planner, I was saying, "No, I think you can do both."
And I, I think this is a difficult one because I think you correctly went back to the, the...
The...
Those meeting minutes, because it's really not... The only purpose of voting on my one is to propose this such, and really what depends is what the intention was, what it was.
The intent.
Put through, not what our original opinion is on a F.
Exactly, and the intent is important because the entire genesis of doing this ordinance was because state law showed, and said every town had to provide for workforce housing.
Right.
And so we went this route to zone an area of town to allow for workforce housing. So the question is, does all multifamily development that is allowed in that area have to have workforce housing?
Do, when you go to the meeting minutes for the people on the board of the...
I think Scott was on the first.
Bernie?
Oh, Bernie. I'm on the other side. I'm on the other side.
Here, here. Your other side's here.
Minutes on January 5, 2010. And it was Norman Berlin's chair, Richard Wilson was vice chair.
Ah, Richard Wilson.
And he's still, yeah.
He's still around, but not around.
Well, not here tonight. Myself, Martin Alex was the workforce member, Jay Alberts, Ernie Landry, Scott Woodland, and Richard and Larry, Tom, as well.
Can we have, can we have some focus? Let me talk about that.
Yeah, please, check me. Is, is this a situation where it's appropriate to set that, obviously, and ask if they're willing to see how they recall that based off, I mean, I guess the meeting minutes aren't the official record that's been approved, so... What do you think?
All right, if there's someone in the audience who'd like to speak, then... Do you have a, a question, one particular list? And state your name and address for the record.
Donna Carter, 119 H. R. O. Kenton. There was a new vote this March that changed some of the density on this property and a couple of other things. So in June, myself, Heidi Roy, the other agent, Ruth Albertson-Dale, the Amentis, the Amentis daughters, we all came to the Selectmen's Meeting mainly because we needed to know if we could clear the end of that 50-foot driveway that was there, the Class 6 road, because no one could see how you could drive in. And so they said that we could, and they're saying the way I said, you know, we didn't really care what we did, that we were able to do that. So at the end of the meeting, I wanted to clarify that I understood what was just revoked on. And so I said, "So we can do multifamily workforce housing and commercial, those are the only two things." And Richard Wilson pretty much looked at us like we had two heads and said, you know, almost as if, "What don't you understand?" And he said, "No." And I says, "We can't do workforce housing?" He says, "No, you can do any kind of multifamily housing, it does not have to be workforce." So I went back online and I was trying to get this situated because, you know, we have buyers for the property. And so I checked the minutes, and it doesn't really say anything about that part of the conversation. But it's at the Selectmen's Meeting. Because we only went there to clarify the road, not really to talk about the zoning, because that we would come here for. But Richard Wilson pretty much said, "No, that's what, that's what was changed, the density was changed, and now you could have four units per acre rather than, no, now you can have four bedrooms per acre. It was before, it was four units per acre." So that kind of stuff changed, and that's what he had said. So I was really surprised when, when we couldn't just put a karma in there. I just thought we fixed the problem with karma because that's pretty much what we had been told since June. And so now we have a buyer, and that's pretty much what we're told, and now we need to clarify it.
So your, your opinion is that it could be...
Multifamily or workforce multifamily?
Where you're not changing your...
Right.
Basically.
And even that it could be commercial and residential mixed?
Yes.
Because there's nothing saying in the ordinances that it cannot.
So you're saying that it could be just multifamily, doesn't have, doesn't have to be workforce housing?
Right, and it could be commercial and multifamily. You know, it could have commercial on the bottom, residence on the top.
Except for the second, rail records, it's not more than 50% of the dwelling, multifamily shelter, workforce. So it could be, so if you take this, it could be...
Could be zero.
It could be zero. Correct, it would be, would be more than half of units.
Ah, yeah, there is a goal of more than that, because the way that definition reads, it could be zero. It could be, and I was thinking, you have to have at least one, but really all he says is, "It can't be more than one."
That's what Richard was saying.